All right, Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, October 20th. It's 5:15 PM. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15th order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the select board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the AG's website. The town will persevere to use this conference call capabilities regularly for other parties to listen in and participate accordingly. If not possible, we will post on the town's website an audio recording as soon as possible after the meeting. But we've been fairly luckily lucky with our Zoom stuff and we welcome everybody to be an active participant in your local government. Okay, so first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance. Whose turn is it? Joe?
Joe, sure, Joe.
Joe. Where are you going with that? All right, I pledge allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic. This stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice flag, it's right here.
I got one too, not on the camera.
Yeah. Oh, that's nice.
First thing, I have a background with a flag, right? Payables warrant 211OB dated October 20th and the amount of, holy, that's a lot of money, Carl. $3,274,079.80.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that is substantially the school assessment.
Substantially is correct.
So that is why this evening's meeting later on on the tax classification hearing is important so that you can act on the approved values of the town and make the necessary votes so that we can submit the tax recap sheet and get the tax rate set and the treasure collector's office can issue the bills.
Correct. There's been a lot of conversation about that over the last couple of weeks.
And there will be a, I believe there'll be notification in there that next year will be on quarterly billing.
Correct. Last year, the tax bills came out about this time last year, right? And they were due in middle of November, right?
Yep.
Open session minutes for the first, the open part of the meeting on October 13th, I need a motion to approve.
Joe Didi will make the motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Roll call vote, Doug Mogul, I.
Joe Didi, I.
Russ Fox, I.
And the open session minutes for our second meeting on the 13th.
Joe Didi will make the motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Roll call vote, Doug Mogul, I.
Joe Didi, I.
Russ Fox, I.
And one more round for the executive session on 10:13.
Joe Didi will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second.
Doug Mogul, I.
Joe Didi, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Great. And the, the meeting with the assessors is at 5:45, right? So we will work the action items until we get to that?
Yep, and we'll close the meeting with them.
Okay. Approve for additional J-Day race for the WIC. I know I saw an email about this. I know that they went in front of the Board of Health last week and they want to add a J-Day race at the WIC on November the 8th, which is a Saturday, that's a Saturday, right? Yes. No, it's a Sunday. Sunday, the 8th. Discussion?
I believe they've had them in the past, Mr. Chairman, and I don't think we've ever had a problem, to my knowledge.
So is that a motion then?
I'll make that informal motion to approve.
Is there a second?
You should second that, Doug. I might actually sell food there and I would hate to be the person that approved that, so I'm abstaining.
Fair enough. So I will second the motion and call for a roll call vote.
Russ Fox, I.
Doug Mogul, I.
Joe Didi will abstain.
You.
Thank you.
Southwick Public Library request for elimination of fines. Joe, you can go back to the library.
I'm excited about this.
They're letting you back in, Joe.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have to wear the ankle bracelet anymore. This is gonna be good.
Was there any, there was talk of a detailed letter that was gonna come out in, for that. I didn't see it yet. Did you see it, Carl?
No. No, just the letter they sent us that I, that should have been here.
Okay, so do we wanna?
It's in your package.
So can, we'll table this?
It's right here in your package.
Ah, that's why I didn't see it.
It's behind the J-Day tax classification stuff.
Okay, so should we take this up next week or do you wanna act on it now?
You have time, you can read it. Go ahead, spend a few minutes reading it, you got time.
Okay. Contract extension for Director of Assessment.
And that's Sue Gore's agreement that you guys worked out previously that Doug and I did. So you're just ratifying that by a vote.
I need a motion, please.
Joe Didi will make that motion.
Is there a second?
Yes, Russ Fox will second.
I think it's a Freudian thing with you. That's the second time it's happened.
I accidentally muted myself. I was preparing for Olive coming into the house.
It's all good. Doug Mogul, I.
Joe Didi, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Authorized DPW capital equipment line item for acquisition of new chipper.
Right, as you recall, gentlemen, you, we did authorize through a FinCon Reserve the repair order, which should be coming back shortly and at the same time they're finalizing research. And we were going to use funds that you had appropriated for DPW equipment related items. I think this is gonna take away, obviously, your, your preference was the roadside mower, but you had already taken some money away for some other attachments on other pieces of equipment, so you weren't gonna have enough anyway. So this would be the fund source that you would use to address that equipment need, to have a second unit, because with all these storms, you know, the first unit went offline. Well, I believe the board talked about a second newer unit and this will accomplish that. You don't want to use Chapter 90 funds at this point of time because you really need to use those to do the road paving and repairs.
So we need a motion to authorize the DPW capital equipment line, right? With that reserve fund transfer?
Yes, no, it's not a reserve fund transfer. You did that for the motor. This is for a second freestanding unit. And it's from existing appropriations through money that had come from like a stabilization fund vote, Doug?
Correct.
Remember, you also, that same year, you had stabilization money and an earmark that Senator Humison had secured on our behalf.
The great Senator Humison. Okay, so we need, what are you looking for then? A motion to approve?
To the use of-
The line use?
The use of that line item funds, you know, acknowledging the fact that the, that other money that was accumulating for a roadside mower is now out of play so that you can put the order in and secure the second chipper unit.
So we'll be chipping instead of mowing. Mr. Didi, would you care to make that motion?
He's muted now.
Now he's muted.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to make that motion. Russ Fox.
Joe Didi will second the motion.
Doug Mogul, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Joe Didi. You have Olive, I have my daughter. Either way, they're coming in the room.
Some people are keeping their ducks in a row. I don't even know where the hell my ducks are. Old business. Has the conservation restriction come in for the Greens yet?
No, sir.
Waiting on the hearing. And we do have, do we have enough now to do the letters of interest for the cable advisory committee?
Yes, you do, Mr. Chairman. We, at a previous meeting, you had me reach out to the previous chairman, Mr. Horace Chuck, and he was okay with it. And then we received letters of interest from, again, previous members, and that would be Paul Connolly, as well as Susan Fox. So you do have three people and you do have enough to appoint a committee and activate them and then have them meet in with, with town council and review the, we'll, we'll assign them a secretary for support like we usually do for an ad hoc board.
Okay, so I think I need a motion to appoint the cable advisory board consisting of Sue Fox, Paul Connolly, and Robert Horace.
Joe Didi will make that motion.
Are you abstaining, Mr. Fox?
Not gonna say a word, Mr. Chairman.
Why do you put yourself through this, Fox? Yeah.
I will second the motion.
All right, great.
Doug Mogul, I.
Joe Didi, I.
Fox will abstain.
Well, it's good enough to put him on the committee. So that's done. We got that actually out of the way and we're still clocking away here. Green Energy, hold. Internet has not met. SPD lieutenant is pending the chief contract. Has anyone heard from Mr. Putnam on the 250 video?
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I was getting prepared for tonight's meeting and I found my note where I was supposed to call Jim Putnam and I did not.
No problem.
Reach out to him tonight if we're through early or tomorrow.
Okay, segue. Reduction in 2021 liquor fees. We had, I, we did talk to the Board of Health during their meeting last week and we did ask them about that and they, they were not inclined to reduce their fees, except they're going to eliminate a fee completely about milk. Nope, Joe had nothing to do with it. The health director suggested we eliminate a, it's like the old fence viewer field driver thing. They have a milk fee that they get every year for some esoteric reason and so they're gonna dump that fee apparently. And so that's gonna be a, a net savings there. But have you completed your activity around the other licensing fee?
I believe that the administrative assistant and I have come to clarity. It, it still breaks down to the 30%, 20% and 10%.
You have it in your folders, gentlemen. Yeah, it's in your, it's in your amended folders, gentlemen.
Yep.
So if you want to peruse it, you have time.
What's your recommendation, Mr. Fox?
I, I, I believe all the businesses have had, been impacted by this pandemic. And I think this is a, you know, a little token. We're still covering the cost, hopefully, of our salaried people that are putting together the licenses and, and, but it helps the businesses a little, especially the ones that were shut down completely and some are still shut down.
So are you in favor of the, which one of these, the 30, the 20, or the 10 to recommend to this board?
Well, the, the 30 would be for the establishments that were unable to open. And then the 20% was for the establishments that had some opening, you know, and then the 10% would be for the remainder.
Okay. And did, I think that was in the discussion, right, was which ones were which? Or is that subject to who, who's gonna decide that?
I can work with Cindy just for clarification, but I think she has a pretty good handle on it.
Okay, I'm game.
Yep.
Joe, do you wanna, do you, you wanna make that motion, Mr. Fox?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Joe Didi will second that motion.
Very well. Roll call vote. Doug Mogul, I.
Joe Didi, I.
Got them both. We're good. We're on the record. Okay, any other old business we need to go over tonight?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just want to let you, Town Council is working with the American Inn prospective buyer and the treasure collector's office on the details leading up to the sale of the American Inn for closing in early November.
Great. November's just not that far away.
No, it's, in fact, it's, they're working on it now. So it's gonna be coming very quickly and there's gonna be, and of course, you know, it's gonna be competing with election time, but they're, they're very anxious to get the transaction done and to take over ownership and by extension, all the other parties that are due to have funds transferred to them from the proceeds will be a part of that process, sir.
Great. Old business, Mr. Didi, Mr. Fox.
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any new business this evening?
Uh, yes, there is, Mr. Jim.
Mr. Steinhardt?
I just want to relate to the board that last week, myself and Laura Fletcher, Town Accountant, IT Coordinator, worked with some other professionals, our outside vendors to finalize the preparation of that community compact grant for IT-related expenses to the Massachusetts Executive Office of Technology. And this is something we had done two years ago, where we, we put a grant in that was well over 100,000 and we got like 91,000 and we leveraged it with our own monies. And we just finished implementing those issues. So now we're, we're looking at continued efforts to secure our network and reduce points of entry and to give us redundancy in other protective measures. So that was filed last week before their deadline.
Excellent. Any other new business, Mr. Steinhardt?
Uh, yes, the Inspektional Services Secretary will be starting tomorrow. So that's gonna, next step of transition with Mrs. Bridges transitioning down to the accounting office. But she will help train the new person starting in that position who will be working for Kyle and for Tammy. And then along with that, we all recognize that Carol Dela Justine is gonna be retiring for the second time.
No cake, no cake. We didn't want, we're done.
I, I did tell her, Joe, and I even told her husband that you, you do not want to let her go. But, so that position, based upon your authorization last week, has been posted and we will start to get a candidate pool that the Town Accountant and her staff will work on and making a recommendation to us for that part-time, non-benefited position. So that's like, I believe it is Thursday, November 19th, sir. So, but it's gonna come quickly. That's why we needed to start this recruitment process.
Month from now.
Yeah, so, so that's what I had, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Didi.
Uh, it was probably under old businesses, I'm sorry. The common pick we gave to the folks at our Cowards Farm for the apple crisp little trailer there, the Coward Farm folks basically are having them move because it's just, they'll be too busy with their Christmas tree season coming up. So they're looking to maybe place that somewhere else in town. I know we did the common pick for that addressed, but we've never had to do this before. I don't think it's an issue having them move. I think the license follows them. It does expire December 31st. So I'll give you, I'll give you guys an update should they decide to move and where they go. Makes sense?
Yeah.
That's it.
I guess somebody just have to check to make sure if, I guess it should be fine, but I guess we'd have to have, just make sure, but.
Yeah, I will. I'll stay on top of it.
That's too bad that they couldn't stay there.
I, 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 I think when I saw them go in where they went, it's a great spot, but it's very busy. Had they gone maybe way over to the left out of the way, they probably could have stayed, but the traffic and, you know, people want to eat those things. They don't want to just leave right away. So, yeah, it's all good. They had a great experience. They love Southwood. They love to buy out here if possible. So I pointed them in a few directions. We'll see what happens.
Great. I hope they move a little further away from my house. They're, they're too good.
Well.
They're really good.
I, I've been lucky. I've gone five times. They've always had a line I drive away because my crew wants them in the worst way. And I use that for a bargaining chip, but I have not come through with them yet. So, oh, well, it's all good.
Other new business?
I had just something I'd like to bring up for consideration, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I'd like, like to see if the board would consider moving our meeting night to Mondays because if there's an issue going on with some of the other boards in town, it's very difficult for us to attend. I know that we had moved it to Mondays because the chairman had a, had a league which I don't believe exists right now. So maybe we could just temporarily move to Monday until something changes.
I have no objection.
I'm good for now. I'm okay.
Okay, so why don't we, do we want to try to? I'll confer with Carl and Cindy and see when we can start doing that. If we have any hearings posted or something like that or scheduled out that we've already advertised for a Tuesday or something, but if not, we can start, I don't know if it's next week or in two weeks.
Yeah, it would, it would not be next week because we've got Fred lined up. So we don't want to touch it. So you, you could start that on maybe November 9th. Cindy, I don't believe we have anything on that Tuesday scheduled.
Perhaps we don't.
So, yeah, you, you could probably start it as of November 9th on a Monday.
It's all like Groundhog Day. It really doesn't matter what day you do anything anymore.
Yeah.
It really is. So, okay.
They had more fun on Groundhog Day.
Okay, anything else? All right, so I, we're running pretty close to schedule. Are we wait, Mr. Connolly, how are you? You're muted.
I'll unmute him, hold on.
I don't think you can.
Really?
He has to unmute himself.
How's that?
I muted you, Paul, because, let me just fix it. I had muted you because there was a ton of background noise on your end. Sounds like there was another meeting maybe going on somewhere.
Oh, the cemetery commissioners meeting in the other room.
I know. You got the, you got the dueling Zooms going on tonight at your place.
You know.
So anyway, are you expecting anyone else from your board?
No, no, it's just gonna be me.
Just you.
I believe Sue, I believe Sue is under Doug, that I see a, a, something below under the name Fred and I believe that's Sue Gore.
Okay.
Ah, Sue, is that you?
You could unmute her.
Oh, she has to unmute herself.
Yep, that's me.
Ah.
All right.
Okay, we got that figured out.
Nice.
At least, is hope really hope?
Well.
I hope so.
Hope? Maybe not. Okay, so this is a continuation of the continuation of the hearing that was continued from, I had it on my schedule.
It's on the bottom of your agenda, Mr. Chairman, the appointment time of 5:45. So when we get-
I was looking for, oh, continuance from 9:29, 10:06, and 10:13. So this is the tax classification hearing.
And you're gonna want to read all those laws that it cites below it.
Again?
Yeah, these laws, yeah, you're gonna want to read them.
I thought we did that when we read the hearing notice the first time, but anyway.
What do you got?
Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, Chapter 56, Chapter 58, Section 1A, Chapter 59, Section 2A, 5C, and 5I, and Mass DOR IGR number 20-8, Pages 10 and 11.
Right, that, which is the process that you went through to this hearing and do consecutive continuances that were permitted under those regulations.
And anything you say can and will be used against you in a court of law. Got it.
Well, I, I think Paul and Sue would share with you the frustrations that even they went through trying to get all of this information finalized from the state, but a, a part of it, I think, also had to do with the, the finalizing of the sale from NiSource of Columbia Gas to Eversource. And there were some issues with valuing and some other regulatory issues that had to be addressed. So, and I think that was happening everywhere in the state that had Columbia Gas being bought by Eversource.
But we now have all of our paperwork in order, correct?
Yes, we do.
As you can see by that letter from the Department of-
The one that we got and you didn't get.
Correct.
You'll get it eventually. It's in the mail, Carl. Don't worry. So.
I've heard that saying before.
Uh, so Paul, do you have a recommendation for us under this?
Yes, sir. The Board of Assessors recommends that we maintain our current residential factor of one.
Is there anyone in the, this is a public hearing, right, kind of, sort of?
Yep, you should open it up for anybody from the public that would like to comment as well as your board members.
Oh, let me do that first. Is there anyone on the board that would like to speak to this issue before I open it up to the public?
I would just add, I believe this is appropriate for the town of Southwick.
I would just concur with Mr. Fox.
I as well. I mean, we've looked at this and we've talked about it quite a bit over the years and it, it, it makes sense. It makes us, you know, business friendly for businesses that want to locate in our town and it's stabilizing to the rate. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak or be heard on this issue? Okay, hearing done, I guess.
Mr. Jim, and I don't believe Cindy received any, any written-
No, I did not.
Any written testimony?
No, I did not.
Related to your, you know, original hearing notice that was put where people could, you know, or send written testimony. So I don't believe we received any written testimony.
Very well. So then would you call for a vote? Will we close the hearing, right? Need a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Fox will second.
Doug Mogul, I.
Joe Didi, I.
Russ Fox, I.
And is this a joint meeting of our both boards there, Carl, or is this, that's, that's effectively closing the hearing?
Yeah, that's gonna close the hearing because you're the one that's making the vote. Paul is just coming on and answering all your questions with his support, professional support person.
Excellent. So now we need a motion to set the, uh, the factor of one, right?
Yeah, Paul knows, Paul knows the wording.
Paul, what's the wording?
It is that we maintain the residential factor of one.
Would someone like to set forth that motion?
Joe Didi will make that motion.
Russ Fox will second.
It's a roll call vote. Doug Mogul, I.
Joe Didi, I.
Russ Fox, I.
There you have it. Great job. Look at that, we got it done in like one minute.
Excellent. That only took a half an hour to get on, but we did it in one minute.
You're now a Zoom professional, Paul.
Hell, yeah, I'm zooming all right.
You got this covered, buddy.
He's lost all the work. He's at the polls. He's gotta go back to the polls.
I'm gonna zoom right on out of here.
Well, thank you very, very much. Thank you, Sue. Thank you, Paul. I appreciate everything on this.
Not a problem. You guys have a spark one night. Okay, guys.
You as well.
Bye.
Okay, so now are we going, this is 6 o'clock. Is this an executive session now, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we are going to move to go into executive session for Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Sections 2 and 3, Chapter 214, Section 1B, and CMR 2903, Police Dispatch, DPW, and Clerical Units. Exceptions number 2 and 3. Exceptions number 2 and 3. And we're moving to go into executive session to get, conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and not reconvene in open session. Move to go into executive session to conduct collective bargaining sessions with non-union personnel and not reconvene in open session. Move to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, excuse me. And not recon, not reconvene in open session. And move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. And the chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position and not reconvene in open session. And move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and that the chair declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the body and not reconvene in open session. A person shall have a right against unreasonable substantial or serious interference with his privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection, in connection herewith to award damages. Doug Mogul, I.
Joe Diddy, I.
Russ Fox, I.
Night, gentlemen.